All right. All the Northern Plains Planning Commission meeting for January the eighth, order at six o'clock. Please rise for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I please get the roll call?
Thank you. Chair King.
Here.
Vice Chair Labonte.
Here.
Commissioner Parra.
Here.
Commissioner How.
Here.
Commissioner Nunikamp.
Here.
Commissioner Miller, I will watch for him if he jumps online and Commissioner Ken O'Dell is excused, your ex officio tonight, Councillor Page.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Item number four is public comments. Is there anyone on Zoom?
None at the moment.
Okay, let the record show that there's no one in the audience and no one on Zoom, so we'll have no public comment. We'll move on to item number five is the approval of the minutes for December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Just a notation, there was a secondary revision sent out, so if you're looking at your original package, it would say notes or the minutes were sent out with a slight change on a vote. So if there's no questions or no changes, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved to accept the minutes from the regular session, December eleventh minutes. A second.
It's moved by Commissioner How, second by Commissioner Nunkamp for approval of the December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four minutes. Second version that was corrected, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the pose. Any extensions? All right, minutes passed. Okay, item number six is unfinished business.
You know, our unfinished business can be addressed in the new business because it is basically the UGB relook at this point, and so we can address it with the new business.
All right, thank you. Any unfinished business, any of the commissioners? Very none. Move on to item number seven, which is new business.
Yeah, thank you, Chair King. First, I just want to welcome everybody back. I hope you all had a great holiday season and Happy New Year to you all. As you know, we have a new council on board now that was sworn in on Monday, and so we're all getting to know each other and get up to speed with things. And so as far as business that's coming forward to the planning commission in twenty-five, we talked a little bit about this last year, but the first item that we're gonna have coming before you will be the FEMA flood code update. It's a pretty big lift, there's a lot of going into that to get the model code into play and to get that all noticed, we need to notice all property owners that have floodplain property that we are doing this, so it'll be a pretty big mailing to put people on notice. Right now, our schedule for this is we're aiming for a March twelfth planning commission meeting, so what that would require is to get the Papa notice out February fifth and mail and publish notice by February twelfth. And we get all that out, then we'll be able to have a PC meeting on March twelfth, but you know, that also requires us to have all the FEMA documents ready to go, all the code update ready and in play. That could be a bit of a tight schedule to make all that happen. And so if we can't make that happen, then we're gonna aim for April ninth, where we would post the Papa notice on March fifth, mail out the public notice on March twelfth, and then have the PC here, the first PC hearing on April ninth. Hard to say right now if we'll need one or two hearings for that. Once we notice folks in the floodplain, I imagine they'll start coming in and getting up to speed with some of this information, but it might not be enough time for them to get all their questions answered, so it could require continued hearing, regardless if we go on March or April to answer everybody's questions and help them understand why things are happening the way they are, why we want model ordinance versus some of the other options, and so that's kind of where we're at right now. And I'll be honest, getting to February, there's gonna be a challenge, there is a lot of work to do to get that code ready to go. So I'm kind of thinking it'll be April, but as I get through this month and then to the beginning of February, I'll have a better idea where we're at. So I'll update you during your February meeting on where that all stands. Any questions on the FEMA code update? Okay, Doug, you're new, but you're a seasoned veteran. Do you, are you familiar with this? We did have work sessions for everybody, and I'm happy to sit down with you if you'd like to come into the office and go through it.
I'm fine.
Okay, this is all coming from the top down, this is all coming from the federal government down to us, telling us that we have to have some of these things in play, and our drop dead date is July first, July thirty-first, excuse me, twenty-five, that we have to have it adopted by, so that's why we're trying to move this thing along and get it done. The next one is the TGM grant that we're working on to update the whole development code. This is getting to be a little tricky, I'll be honest with you, because I've been working with DLCD on this grant. They're excited about North Plains because we're doing an urban growth boundary expansion. However, that could change with this new council, there is a possibility that we might not be moving forward with that. And so I know that's my item number C, but this TGM grant could get complicated if the UGB process gets halted. So we are gonna proceed with it until we hear otherwise, but right now, you know, our hope is that we would have the grant in by around the end of March, is that correct?
So as far as TGM timeline goes, we'll be coming back to you at the February meeting with a detailed presentation on the program, examples of how the program's been implemented, and then we'll be asking for a letter of support. We'll also be doing the same thing with city council, asking them for a letter of support and hoping to get our letter of interest in to TGM late February, early March.
And the reason, you know, in case you don't know what TGM stands for, I'm assuming you may, but there might be folks who don't, it's a transportation growth management program, so they try to address projects that have the opportunity to bring in some mobility standards, street standards, things that would help make the community more walkable, more livable, and so if we're not going forward with urban growth and expansion, it could change their mind about North Plains a little bit, and they could decide that they want to send that money to another city, so it is complicated, it's a bit unknown, but we're all gonna, we are gonna proceed, and as Rowan indicated.
Contingent to the UGB?
Pardon?
I thought we already received the grant, we did not receive?
This is a different grant. So we did receive a TGM grant for the concept planning for the UGB, so that is, once we get.
I guess I thought you were telling us at previous meetings that we'd already received the grant for the code amendments.
No. We haven't even put the grant in yet.
We were advised by the TGM staff to wait until the new year to apply.
So there was a TGM grant that the city did receive, as for the concept planning of the urban growth boundary, that money has been given to the city, but the city may be returning that money, depending on where the urban growth boundary project goes. And so the concept planning is, as you guys are familiar with, we've, because we're not in metro, we first set the boundary and then we plan the boundary, and so that's what that grant was for, was to plan the boundary after the boundary's been set. This grant is separate from that, but it's still a TGM grant, but it's specific for doing code updates. So they have a lot of different TGM programs out there with different pots of money for different types of grants, and this one would be for updating the code. Any questions on the grant?
Looking to us more because we may be doing the expansion, but are we not such a likely donor then if we're not gonna do the expansion?
They don't look at us as favorably. Correct.
Anyways, yeah.
They they were excited because we have a housing needs analysis and an economic opportunities analysis that has been adopted, that they thought that that was great information that we could rely on to move the city forward with, that would help with updating the code because we have the ability to demonstrate a need right now. They repeal the HNA and put a stop on the urban growth boundary work, we would be looked at less favorably. Any other questions on that?
So my only other question is, you would look for for us to see if we wanted to move forward with the grant?
Yes, I appreciate that question, yeah. Part of the grant application requires that the planning commission and the city council both provide a recommendation in support of doing that program. And so that's why we would come before you at your next meeting and present some of that information to you and look for your support.
Is it support in following whatever they dictate or us pushback in areas that we want to change things for our own community?
No, what would happen, I mean, so giving the buyout by the planning commission and the city council that they're interested in doing that, that they want to get a grant to look at the code and update the code, that's one component, that's part of the grant package. Once we're awarded the grant, we also have to bring on a consultant, and they have a list of about ten or so that we would be able to choose from, interview and choose from. That consultant would work with us on doing the code update, and it would be a public process where we would put together some recommendations on the code update, bring that before the public and you folks, and start getting recommendations from you on any changes, any modifications, things of that nature, just like we do on everything else. And then we would move that forward once we get a recommendation from you to the city council. And so it's gonna be a look at the entire code, but I would imagine that it'll probably focus more on the underlying zoning districts and subdivision ordinance, the partition ordinance, the street ordinance, and the public facilities ordinance will probably be the ones that get addressed the most. I don't know how much things like the variance, conditional use, things of that nature, we'll get a heavy look at because the grant is kind of tied around this growth management aspect, and so you know, there's still a lot to learn from them, but right now, these are the things that we are up to speed with. We know we have to get two letters of recommendation, one from the planning commissioner, one from the city council. We do know that they are looking favorably at us because of the urban growth boundary work that we've done, and that if we don't continue to do that, it could be a detriment to our application. And we know that we would like to try and get this application in in the first half of this year, so we can try and get somebody on board around the end of August to just start working on this project. So that's, that's where we're at with that, and this, you know, to be honest with you, I was hired in September twenty-two was the first thing Andy asked me to look into, go find money to update the code, and so we did find the opportunity last year through DLCD, and as Rowan indicated, you know, once we reached out to them, they had suggested to pause and be prepared to come in in the first half of twenty-five, so that's what we've been doing, is trying to put everything together to get something under twenty-five.
My only concern with it is when I was on the parks board and the board itself was taking a look at all the code and revising all the code, I put a frickin' lot of time outside of the meetings, redid all this stuff, only to have a consultant hired and ended everything that we wanted, instead we had to follow all these state things that come to find out were not even actually true, because we weren't part of metro, we weren't over ten thousand, all these other little things that come into play that took away our ability to have larger parks, more parks, all this, so again, when it comes to having somebody, a consultant, come in and change our code, make present what they think we should be doing, I'm very skeptical of it.
Okay.
If I might speak to this a little more?
Sure.
Yeah. So just a little bit more about how their process works, and I've actually taken an interest, one of the cities that took great advantage of this program was Monmouth, and they did a full-scale project like we're looking at. At least five public meetings per phase, two phases. They spent a lot of time just in the public engagement phase of looking at what the community's goals and desires were, and the function of the consultant really is to just enact what is identified in that first phase, to do the sort of boots-on-the-ground code writing. Everything comes back to planning commission and city council for approval. If you don't like it, if the community doesn't like it, we send it back, we don't have to adopt it. Now, the letters of support are requested so that TGM has a little bit of confidence that the planning commission and the city council are at least interested in updating, and they want to move with the code and have something progressive come in, so that's their little bit of assurance. But as far as, you know, getting into the details and making sure that something comes in that is North Plains specific and serves the interests of this community, that's pretty top of line for the program, community specific.
Any other question? Okay, the housing needs analysis, I know it's been adopted and accepted by the state. If the city council appeals the housing needs analysis, do they have to come up with a new one? Or do they just say that the projected growth from Portland State and our limited housing is okay? Or does the state have any ability to say, you can't show that you need housing and then turn around and say you don't need it?
Yeah, that's a great question, Chair King, and so it's probably a good segue into C here, the UGB relook. If the council decides to repeal the housing needs analysis, because we're a city that's under ten thousand, there's really nothing that would happen to us, because we are not subject to periodic review and twenty-year land use supply like cities that are ten thousand or greater, of course, you know, before twenty, before two thousand, that did apply to us, but once they changed the rules, it didn't. One of our concerns about repealing the housing needs analysis is the state adopted a new program in the last legislative session to have what's now called the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis done, or ONA. And that's where the state is now using PSU data and other data to calculate the projected housing needs for every city, every incorporated city within the state of Oregon. They adopted some methodology recently, and then they just came out with their first draft of kind of what all this is going to look like. And one of the things that they said for North Plains was for a twenty-year planning horizon, we should plan on seven hundred and twenty-four dwelling units. In our current housing needs analysis, once you subtract out Bryn Hill, so that current housing needs analysis shows about thirteen hundred and seventy-five or so dwelling units, but once you subtract out the five hundred plus units from Bryn Hill, that brings it down to about seven hundred and ninety-five dwelling units that are in the current HNA. So between the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis that just came out for the whole state and the HNA that we did, there's about a difference of seventy dwelling units between the two. Not very substantial. The second thing that the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis requires, and is gonna be a big challenge for small communities, is we have to take the seven hundred and twenty-four dwelling units and break them out over different AMIs, right, so we have to accommodate so many dwelling units at thirty percent of the region's AMI, sixty percent of the region's AMI, eighty percent of the region, and hundred and twenty percent, right, so we can't just say we're gonna do it the way we're gonna do it now and maybe have a lower density, the densities would increase with the OHNA, and then we are also required to do reporting on how we're working towards accomplishing those targets. There's a lot of unknowns right now at DLCD about how all this is gonna play out, especially for small communities who decide they would like to grow.
Outside of metro, limited transportation.
Correct, absolutely, absolutely, we've asked these questions, there's no good answers right now. And so we're nervous about that, we're nervous if, if the council repeals the HNA and then decides they want to retake a look at doing an urban growth boundary expansion, we are now subject to the ONA is what that would mean.
So we're not subject to it if we have our own, and?
If they keep what we have in play right now, we can use it.
Because it's already been accepted.
It's already been adopted, and we don't have to do anything further, we could just continue the process with that, and we would be able to complete it and meet the densities that are in that HNA, that's what the state would allow us to do.
So how does the state do the HNA? Do they come to the city and ask for all the data then to create the?
Did the state do that?
Yeah.
No, the state went to PSU. What I'll do is, it's very complicated, it's a large document.
We went through, when we went through the housing needs analysis process, I don't know how somebody sitting down in Salem was able to do the same thing without.
The thing is, what they don't know is they don't know what your billable inventory is.
They don't know the BLI, the billable lands inventory, and so I would, and that is also a little bit of an unknown right now, because when you do your HNA, you're doing your billable lands inventory as part of that review, right? And now they're taking on at least a portion of that, and so if we say, yeah, we want to grow, we would probably have to show them, you know, how we're gonna accommodate those seven hundred and twenty-four dwelling units, so first we'd have to say we have so much space inside that's zoned a certain way that we could put some housing units into, but it wouldn't capture all of it, so in order to be able to get all of those seven hundred and twenty-four dwellings, we would have to do a UGB expansion. But again, because this just went into play January first, twenty-five, there's still a lot of unknowns at the state level on how it's all gonna play out, but what I can do is I will email you guys the document that came out from the state. Like I said, it's rather long, but it goes through all the methodology and all the thinking and how they put all these things into play to come up with the numbers that they had, and it's quite detailed. So before I ruin it, let me send it to you.
Passed, was it a governor's signature or was it a?
It was, it was the legislature, they passed it and then it was signed by the governor. But I'll give you that document so you can go through it, it is lengthy, and then if you go to the bottom of the document, down into dependencies, that's where they have the tables for all the different jurisdictions saying what their allotment is, so they give you like a three-year planning period and a twenty-year planning period, showing you what the housing need would be for each jurisdiction. And it is different, it is different in metro how they do it than it is for all, well, Salem and Portland Metro are calculated a little bit differently than the rest of the state. So there are implications, should this new council choose to terminate the RAC and stop the process and choose to repeal the HNA, because at that point, we would be starting from scratch again, we'd be starting over. And at that point, we would be subject to the new rules, so we want to try and get that point across to them, let them know that there is some, you know, if we are gonna take on a UGB expansion, we're better doing with the information we have now than going forward with the ONA, because there's so many unknowns, and it's quite a burden on the city when it comes to trying to address some of the standards that they want us to address, so.
Yeah, one of my biggest concerns, of course, is that, you know, they came across you know, with the vote and everything, is smart growth, but it's technically no growth, and that unfortunately is not good for the city, and I hope that the city council understands that, because that means no municipal park, no additional industries, no housing for the future, and then once you do, then you've got to get into this new
It means all of that.
densities that we can't really handle.
It means all of that, unfortunately. It's really unfortunate that we've found ourselves in this situation, I think the effort to undertake the UGB expansion was worthy, I think it was valid. It may have gotten a little ambitious, but it's unfortunate that it deteriorated the way it did and ended up where we're at today.
Well, as one of the few people that went through the last UGB expansion, I was not, I was not concerned about the aggressiveness of it, because it's a big process, it's an expensive process, it's time-consuming, and there's nothing that says you have to bring it into the city, but you protect that land for your future, and unfortunately, if they don't understand the concept behind that, because all they said, oh, it's you know, there'll be all these warehouses, all these data centers, but they don't understand the safety that it does for the city and the surrounding area.
I can't agree with you more, Chair King, I wish everybody had that background and understanding of why this is happening, why we're looking at doing this. One thing that's become pretty clear to staff as we work through some of these workshops and even working with some of the RAC members is there's a real misunderstanding out there, and who even owns this land? They think we own the land, they think we own all those acres over there on the east side of town, you know, on the west side of town, on the north side of town, it's private property, we own none of it. And we're in contact with no businesses, no developers.
I think that's ludicrous to say.
Special interest groups, and let's tell you why, I'll tell you why, we don't own the land, we don't have anything to offer them, right? And so when you do this UGB expansion, the market's gonna dictate what businesses come into this community based upon the zoning that we put down and the uses and the uses that are allowed under those underlying zoning industries, that's what drives the development, okay? The other huge misunderstanding that people seem to have is how infrastructure is paid for.
Oh, yeah, because.
They have no understanding.
They think the taxpayers.
That we are not putting in the infrastructure, we've tried to share with them that, you know, all the infrastructure that you're seeing out in Bryn Hill, all the new roads, the sewers, the sidewalks, the wastewater, the stormwater facilities, all of that was put in at Lennar's cost. We didn't pay a penny through it. And then they put in a one-year maintenance bond for each phase that they complete for that public infrastructure, and then once that maintenance bond is up and we've accepted all the public improvements, then the city is responsible for the maintenance of those public facilities at that point. And the way development in Oregon pays for itself is the developers put in that infrastructure to serve their projects, and then we collect the SDC dollars to maintain our systems and do improvements to our systems, so what we can do with those SDC dollars is we can add capacity to our water system, we could add capacity to our sewer systems, and we can add capacity to our transportation systems. That's where we would support and help out in that process, so if there's a failing intersection, we could bring dollars to that to try and help improve that intersection. But the roads that would be built for anything that's over on the east side, say we brought in that east side, that would be coming at the developer's expense, except for the bridge that would have to go over the river in the wetland area there to extend Pacific. We've talked a lot about that and how to kind of come up with ways to fund that, so we're not having to pay for the whole thing. And one idea is what I experienced when I was at the city of Bend, there was a large transportation project that had to be completed, but we didn't want to wait until the last person in triggered the major failure of that intersection, and they had to incur the full burden of building that. And so what we did is we looked at all the vacant lots along a certain stretch, and we decided that each one would pay a pro-rata share towards the improvement of that intersection. And so what we did is we calculated if they all did the worst-case scenario, you know, the highest, most intense use, how many trips would that generate and how much should they pay, and so we had a price for each lot on what they would pay, and then when the projects came in, we looked at what they were actually gonna develop based upon the worst-case scenario, and if it wasn't the worst-case scenario, we backed it down a little bit. So everybody paid and contributed towards the ultimate improvement, and then the city kicked in the final little bit to get it done. That would be our hope with something like the bridge here.
We gave us a limited miller risk tax in California, the miller risk tax was a short-term tax as on the development. Just a short term, right, the next five years, and they're going to bucks to your tax bill, or twenty years to begin more easily to report. And that paid for the destruction of the first, of the water towers and bridges and that kind of stuff, and there's another rule just on that one the one specific area.
Yeah, so there's a lot of different ways to get there.
Well, it'd be like an LID.
It is similar to an LID, it is, it is very similar, it's just typically LIDs are, you know, put in by. Put in by the whole community there that are part of that local improvement district. Um so it would be a little bit different. It's almost um. What am I thinking of here? Um I can't remember the term, but anyhow, it it really worked well in in Bend when I was there. And it did contribute towards a a major roundabout being uh built at fifteenth and Reed Market Road that uh is there today if you ever wanted to go look at it. Um but uh it did require collecting dollars from every property owner along the way that developed to to get it done. And then the city built it. Um and so that would be, you know, kind of the idea for some of the infrastructure that would be needed to serve over there on on the east side. You know, if a really large project that came in, there are some other state funding options to help with public uh infrastructure. But you know, until we have an idea of what's going to happen, it's hard to say how all that would play out. Um.
I have one follow up question to that um about controlling the um annexing to the city once it's brought into the U G B. Um how could the city deny application for annexation if a property is contiguous to the city boundary? And inside the U G B?
So you're saying if a um citizen came forward and asked for uh their property to be included in the urban growth boundary?
Not in the urban growth boundary. I'm saying if we if we accept. The the recommendations of um the the relit committee and move forward with all of that acreage. What's to, what's to slow down the growth? What's to, what? From a city standpoint, how do you stop every single owner from coming in and applying to be annexed to the city on day one?
Yeah, the the that is largely, largely, largely controlled by where the current infrastructure is, right? So if I have property all the way down at the south end um of that new expansion area on the east side there. And all my utilities are at the north end, and I would have to drag all that infrastructure across several properties to get down to my property. Why would I do that? Why would I anticipate all the property owners along the way, right?
I'm not even asking that because. It would be my belief because my position at the county, I see it every day. That as soon as property comes into the U G B, they already have options to purchase a room that's with developers. They're ready to go on day one. So and they're usually purchased, and I'm going to be honest, by the exact same developers for an entire area. It's so common. Um so what's to stop? All of the acres coming in to annex to the city on day one, once they're inside the U G B?
Nothing.
So how do you stop the growth? How do you slow the growth that everything isn't developed within the first year?
It would blow me away if that happened.
Well, I'm just saying though, from a city standpoint, how do you control the growth?
You put an urban growth boundary out there.
I understand that, but I'm saying.
Then that's that's the control. That's the control element.
That's not the control element. The control element is once it comes to the city because then they can develop.
Right, right.
If the city can't deny application, what's to control the the growth, once it's all in the U G B?
Question, I think, is can uh zoning requirements? Or something in the development code, can that dictate the percentage or amount of land that comes in in a given year?
We don't have that.
Can we have that? Um. We can talk about it. I've not seen that before. Because obviously, the state of Oregon took away the. City's right to vote on annexation and it said any piece of property that's contiguous to. A city limits inside the U G B can be brought in at any time. So. Uh is the city have any recourse to at least slow that? Through through its code.
Not the law for money.
Right, and I. So, okay, so in other words, uh. This uh second thought is, can you say to property owners? If you want to bring, if you want to come in U G B, before you come in U G B, we need deep restrictions on when you develop.
Um we could work with them through an annexation agreement to have that conversation, to see whether they're amenable to trying to do something like that. But it would be uh um probably a give and take in that conversation to find out, you know.
But why would they do that then? Because once they annex to the city, now they've got city tax level rather than incorporated. They're not going to sit on it.
No, I I I mean, you look at the land that's over there on the east side. They're very large parcels, right? There's hundred acre parcels, fifty acre parcels. Eighty acre parcels over there. Um but your point, yes, I think if somebody were to do an annexation, it would be a large. Piece of land that would come in, that would probably go through some type of subdivision application to create smaller parcels out of those larger parcels. And then those parcels would be sold off probably to developers to develop uh at their time period. Um I I doubt that someone's going to come in with a hundred acre project right away. Um so, you know, once you develop those um commercial properties uh through a subdivision. Then they need to sell those off, right, to a buyer who wants to come in and build a project on those on those lots. Um and so again, um I'm not saying that you can't see a large amount of land come in all at once. But I doubt it would all be developed all at once.
So there's no.
Other than having land division done.
Well, the hope, the big difference is, is our last urban growth expansion was all residential. So it was all residential. So. That being said, they just, it all came in and it gets developed by big residential developers. Now, there's not a whole bunch of commercial developers that are going to be kind of spending that kind of money to develop large parcels in a small town.
Correct. And that itself will slow uh employment development. Yeah, and and if you've been kind of following along with all the things at the federal level, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk out there that if the. New president um comes in and imposes tariffs on things that it will really hit the building community quite hard. And it will raise the cost of most uh projects to to be built. Um and there's real fear that um it'll really slow down economic development um if he does that. And so. I'm not saying it's going to happen. I'm saying those are some of the conversations that's happening in the development community right now. So, yeah, there's a um, there's a lot that can happen there. Absolutely. Once, once you bring the land into the urban growth boundary. It they have the ability to come forward to the city and request annexation into the city limits.
Well, and that's probably the reason why when we're having hearings, I asked if we couldn't just bring in half of the land. And everybody said, no, 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 we have all these requirements. Well, now to come find out, no, we didn't have those requirements with D L C D. So why didn't we, you know, move?
Well, it's too full there. It's too full there. We don't have the mandate from D L C D to do an urban growth boundary expansion. Should a city under ten thousand choose to do one though, and adopt an H and A? Then the state is saying, then you are obligated now to fulfill that.
As I was told, we must have one. And that's why I was under pressure.
The last mayor said that.
He must have this.
Good.
And that's how I was growing with that he must have this is the wrong.
It is because we have a N uh H and A. That's the require.
No, for under ten thousand.
No, if you do a H and A, you have to bring in the land.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, if you go that steps.
Yeah.
But we didn't have to do that.
Yes, be- because back in whenever it was, twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen, the city made a decision to grow.
Right.
The city said, we want to grow, right? And so part of growing requires you to do the housing needs analysis. Right? That's part of the step one, really, once you decide that you want to grow. And so we voluntarily made that decision that we wanted to grow. And and so we did the H and A. And we did the E O A. So the city made a determination that we wanted to do a more comprehensive urban growth boundary expansion. We didn't want to just do. Something for residential. We wanted to look at the city more holistically, right? And look at all of our needs. And if we're going to do an urban growth boundary, let's address all those needs to check King's point because it is very expensive. And very time consuming. And that's why they try to do it for a twenty year planning horizon. And so you're not revisiting this every five years or so. Um there's a lot of efficiencies by going through a twenty year supply. Um because the city adopted the H and A though. Um the state is now saying you are obligated to do that. You've demonstrated that you have a need. You've chosen to go forward with an urban growth boundary expansion. And because you've done that, you now have to, you know, address your need. Um and so that's what we say.
But the housing needs analysis didn't require the amount of acreage that was being proposed on the development. The housing needs analysis, the economic opportunity analysis.
It determined the residential amount.
Right, I heard the residential.
Well, then then we're not talking about housing needs now. We're talking about economic.
What I'm talking about when I, when I proposed bringing in half of the amount of acreage that was coming in instead of the eight hundred and something acres.
Oh, the.
It would have.
Economic opportunity analysis was uh speculative. So it was a correction. To your point. Required.
So then why did we, so, okay.
Because the city council would, that's what the city council at the time wanted to do.
Because we could bypass all of this crap if we would have just took it the half, half of it at a time.
No. Because they don't want any growth.
And and you all, forgive me, I can't remember all the comments that, you know, when I, this is all kind of happening right when I showed up. In September twenty two, you all were kind of moving towards the adoption of all these documents. Um as a matter of fact, I think um it was just the next month, in October twenty three or the, or the second meeting in uh. Twenty two where the H and A was adopted. Um but um if you made a recommendation to reduce land. To the, to staff. It would have been just to reduce from economic lands.
Right.
Because we still were obligated to do the H and A.
And I, and I literally just asked, can we take in half the amount? And I didn't specify whether it was running, you know, for residential or economic. I just said half the amount and I was told no.
And there, maybe there was confusion on that. I I don't know. I don't.
Depends on who told you.
That Austin said.
And so um so then um, you know, what what ultimately happened was, you know, uh they did adopt a resolution. Um it did get put on the voter, um voters' ballot, you know, as a referendum. Um forty. Percent, forty, forty three or four percent of the registered voters voted. And seventy two percent of those folks said, no, we don't want it, right? And so the council took that as, um, okay. You, you don't want to go this big, so let's do a relit. Let's revisit this, you know, and put together the rack. Which is really a pretty interesting group. I think Tom can speak to it. It's just nineteen members um throughout the the region here.
So what's the acreage then that the relit comes looking at?
Um, well, we're going to have a, we're going to have an open house tomorrow and I encourage you to come.
I will. I just have missed, I've had too much personal.
No, I understand. I understand. I'm I'm just trying to catch you up. Um so we are going to have an open house tomorrow here at Jesse Mays. From forty seven. Uh there'll be four maps shared with everybody there to um provide. Comment on. And we can, you can also do it online. You can also take the same survey online. Um and that link will be up uh tomorrow afternoon, probably what, around three or so?
Yeah.
Probably around three. Um and so what we're going to show you is we're going to show you the, the one that was. The council adopted, right? Then we're going to show you one that um has more of a housing focus. Um which captures all the H and A land that we would need to meet the H and A that we have right now. And then you're going to see one that has more of a job focus, which would have less residential land. Um and a little bit more economic land uh than the other ones.
So the overall acreage remains the same?
No, we, we, we're not obligated to bring in all the E O A land. And and none of these, none of these four maps show all the E O A landing. Um it only shows the east side, um including that last little bit right there at the corner of Jackson School and West Union. Um as well as the south side, um and nothing on the east side. But the.
Nothing on the west, west.
West side, excuse me, nothing on the west side. And so um if if folks were like, yeah, we we kind of like the job focused map. That's the direction we would like to go. The problem with that is it does not take in all the H and A lands. And so we would have to start over if people went that route. Um the only route that gets us to a finish line with the current documents that we have is either doing. What was previously approved by the council or going to the one that's more of the housing focus. That would allow us, and that one shows only economic lands coming in on the east side.
I think we can accommodate all the housing in the. East side. It's just we didn't want to. I think there's enough land to do it.
There's a few hiccups over there, Chikking, in terms of um, there's a lot of marginal lands that um. Impact how much total acreages over there for development. Um and so Rowan did some quick math today because we were trying to figure out, what if we went to the owner? Could we even get all the owner land in over on the east side? And um what Rowan found is if we were to try and accomplish that, we would be accommodating densities over there at about ten dwelling units per acre. Were there about ten, ten plus? Um so uh the density we have right now in the current H and A is more around eight dwelling units per acre. It's more in line with the current development pattern that you see in the city. Um the, the new one would be much denser. Much denser. You'd have, we would have to make room for more um compact housing.
Yes and no. If you actually plan for an apartment complex or something to that, then then it wouldn't be so dense, but.
Well, I'm I'm saying, I mean, you know, it it would have to rise up to at least a certain density level of at least ten dwelling units per acre. And right now, I mean, if you look at our our two point five zone, I think it's um somewhere between um. Twelve and seventeen dwelling units per acre in that zone. So a lot would be zone two point five. Not seven point five or or some smaller, single family type zone. You need to get a lot more of the higher density zoning. And so all those maps will be up, you know, and 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 like I said, you can come between four and seven. Jesse Mays will be open. We'll have four stations with tables and the maps and. Rowan and I will be here as well as uh Steve Fowles from Three J to help answer any questions that folks may have. Um you may not want to fill out anything when you're here. But you can go back and get on your computer and you can take the survey on the computer if you would like. Um these maps that we are going to bring forward have largely been generated through the community meetings that we've had. And so. The second community meeting that we had, we had about ten tables in here. Um with large maps on them and we had people sit, you know, we we tried to move people around. So people didn't sit with their close friends. You know, we wanted to get people meeting, new people and try to disperse people a little bit. And these maps came from that effort. As well as um bringing all that information back to the rack. And the rack kind of sharing their thoughts on those maps. And then we kind of said, okay, this seems to be where the consensus is. And so we've generated, and and the last map, the last map shows no growth. The mass back here shows the current city limits analysis. With all that being said. Based upon what I'm hearing. And I'm not talking to the horse's mouth, but I'm hearing a lot um that the current council is um. For a lack of a better term, hell bent on stopping this. Okay, and so we anticipated at their next meeting on the twenty first. Because that's their first time to set their own agenda, that they are going to likely um terminate the rack. Um and it's possible that they could also move towards repealing the H and A. Um and just stopping this whole process. That, that's kind of what I'm hearing. So.
There's no legal reason why we should do this, besides, there is no legal reason why we need to have equal at all. I I'm still kind of new because I was told, I was told was that we need to have this, this is all the land.
Well, let me, let me help with that. I believe when this process was picked up however many years ago. Um whether it was the consultant or staff, I mean, obviously I wasn't here. There was a misunderstanding at that time on. If we had to do this the way we used to have to do it through periodic review to maintain a twenty year supply or not. Um it sounds like there was confusion there and folks thought we had to. Um as we went through that process, we learned that. No, it changed. You know, if you're ten thousand or less, you're not required to have to do this.
When did we learn this?
Hmm?
When did we learn this?
When did we learn this?
When, when did we know this? Um.
After we already.
I would say it started to come to the city's attention around um the same time the resolution was being adopted for the U G B. And at that point, um I know that um Andy and the other folks um on the U G P team. Um it it and started to sit there and acknowledge that we aired. Uh it's not required by state law to have to do a U G B expansion for these smaller communities. But then at the same time, the messaging from staff was there's still a pressing need for the city to grow. Uh because we have some imbalances right now in our budget. Uh because we are largely a veteran community, you know, eighty five percent of our. Tax dollars come from residences and fifteen percent right now is coming from businesses. Um and that's a really challenging budget to maintain and provide city services to those eighty five percent folks who. Um would like more services. And so um that's why there was such a large focus on the economic lands. To try and bring in um so much is to help create that balance that we don't have right now. Because ideally, you would like to be closer to fifty fifty. Um the nice thing about businesses is they. They pay the taxes, but they don't use a lot of our services, uh particularly after five o'clock. Um and so there's kind of a benefit there to having, you know, a fair amount of businesses paying taxes into your tax base. Because they're not a heavy user of the services, but they help pay for it. They don't usually need police after five o'clock. They don't need. Um they don't go to the library. They don't go to our parks. They tend to go home and use those amenities that are in their name. And use those amenities that are in their neighborhoods. Um, so that that's kind of where this whole thing. Rose up from was the budget and and looking at that and um, you know, the other thing that compounds this a little bit is um. You know, the tax base for your resident. Can only go up by three percent, you know, per dollar measure five and fifty, so we only collect three percent of the tax. Right now, what we're seeing though is our cost for doing business is going up at about five plus percent. Um, and we don't foresee that coming down, we think it's only gonna get further away from us. Um, and so we see there's gonna be a crossing here where the cost of providing services is gonna become greater than the. Taxes we collect to be able to provide those services, and so there's gonna be a lowering in the quality of services that we can provide, you might have to see. More lease in the streets in the fall, you might have to go longer with top holes, you might not get any more sidewalks. Um, things of that nature, there there's gonna have to be trade offs, right, we'll have to figure out. Um, how do we provide the services with what 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 we have? And so um Andy and um. Bill and the team that was here before I got here, so it's time for us to to do something about this and and they shared that with the council, I'm sure they shared it with you folks. And and people said, yes, let's let's address this, let's be proactive and and here we are today.
Well, I just throw in that obviously the uh old concept of sprawl. Uh, against the uh ordinance was that it was too much, and now it almost sounds like. Anything is too much, so it's just, I it's ludicrous for them to think that they should just. Get rid of the relook, that's what they wanted, they wanted to to. Take in less, so at least you ought to go through the process and find out what the heck you come up with, and then if they want to shoot it down. You know, I mean, the true colors is they don't want to have any growth. And that's, I think that's bad for the city, that that's my personal opinion, okay.
Well, you know, it's been interesting, like I said, to watch some of these meetings unfold because um one of our um. Most vocal people who's in opposition to the U G B expansion um is not opposed to bringing in land on the east side.
Oh, that was when the people were talking to me about too, when I walk around, east side's fine, west side's no, and the last minute. It felt like the north or the or the west side was all running there all 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 once. This hit well with me, but I was, again, told, oh, we need to do this, this is what we have to do, like. So there must have been some kind of disconnect there because.
Uh, yeah, um, there there does appear to be some disconnect there.
Yeah.
So uh, you know, it's it's. It's unfortunate that we find ourselves in this situation, I'll be honest with you, I I think there's been a lot of um. Good um effort put into this, I think people had um good intentions. Um, I think um there might have been some misunderstanding on a few things that created a little bit of conflict that uh spiraled out of control. And I think social media went just bonkers on this thing and and really created more misunderstanding. Um, as a matter of fact, um, when we were at our last rack meeting and uh we were talking about different things. You know, some of the rack members who voted against the U G B proposal came out and said. We now feel, now that we know, now that we've heard you guys give a presentation and talk to us about things. We feel that those people that canvassed the city of North Plains trying to get us to vote no on that referendum were not telling us the truth. They feel like they were duped. Uh, and they're mad, they're very mad, and and they believe now that it is the right thing to to grow a little bit, that that some growth would be beneficial for the city. Particularly from the economic side of things, uh, so it is um. It's fascinating, I I'll I'll leave it at that, it has been fascinating to watch what's happened since the election. And having these rack meetings have been just. Just unbelievably beneficial, I think, to a lot of people, and so to Stuart's point, it would. It would just be horrible, I think, if they terminated the rack because that was one of the things they ran on was community participation, and right now. We've got that happening at a very high level.
So um, would it? I mean, if you, if that's what you're hearing, or that's what you're hearing that they're gonna wanna squash this. Why isn't there some kind of proposal to have the new council meet with planning commission and talk about? Why that why growth needs to occur and how it, you know, the the best way for the community rather than. A hundred percent squash.
We're trying.
Actually knowing.
We're trying.
Because like you said, I think some of it's coming from some of this. Some of these discussions come from complete miscommunication, and you know, one person hears it and they roll with it. And it may or may not be accurate, and of course, we all know the telephone game, the story changes five people down the line anyway, so. Who knows what everybody's hearing and at what rate they're hearing it, and. I don't know, it just seems to me like at some point we all need to be on the same page, and everybody knows that, you know. Anybody that's been on the planning commission long enough knows council doesn't have a lot of. Background when it comes to what is required for planning, as you know, they've overturned our decisions. Um, so I, I mean, I would be absolutely open to meeting with council. To discuss from a planning standpoint, what would we do for our city and what? What we would need to grow at our rate with our code.
Right now, um, I think the best way to do that, um. And correct me if I'm wrong.
I just.
But I do believe, I do believe that there's going to be a work session with the city council on the twenty first of this month. Um, it's a Tuesday because the Monday is a holiday, um, on the twenty first of this month, um, with the rack.
Oh.
Okay, Tom is your representative. I think you guys should share information with Tom. And have him share the planning commission's position. I think that would be really, really smart.
Why don't, I don't necessarily want to say the planning commission's position, I just wanna. If 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 this is all coming down to them not understanding code, how it works, how it's implemented. I mean, I think it needs a bigger discussion, I don't.
No, I don't disagree with you.
It's hard for people to make informed decisions when they don't have the full background.
It's also very hard to inform people when they shut uh down too. Um, and right now, we don't have many. Aside from maybe Council Fage and uh Council, um, what's her name?
Payton, oh, the new one, McCall Wallace.
McCall Wallace and Payton, um, there might not be that ear on the rest of the council. So I I don't disagree with you at all, I would, I would show up at those meetings, you know. You can, you can address this council on February, on January twenty first, just like we have public comment, they have public comment. Um, there won't be probably anything on that agenda.
We're not supposed to address them as planning commissioners.
You're not, no, you're not supposed to address them on an appeal of a planning commission decision.
But I'm just, I'm just shocked that.
Who said that?
Not one of them is here to be able to learn. Attorney didn't say that.
They.
He did not say that.
Okay.
Okay. Well, he didn't say anything about it.
I'll send you the video.
I just remember from years ago, the. That we were at, because we showed up for the, it was when the city was going to take jurisdiction at North Avenue. And we were redoing the transportation plan, and we were. Um, testifying up there, and after that meeting is when Chris said that we shouldn't be doing. Because we were trying to tell him the reasons why, you know, street wits, blah, 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 and. It was because that stupid suicide. Will comment.
Right, Danica, you have something?
I was just making a comment, I'm just shocked that not one of them is here tonight trying to learn more of what goes on in the city, I mean. You would think that you'd be trying to gain some type of knowledge of. What goes on, but. Not not one of the newly elected members of the council has um stopped in to talk with staff since they've been.
So in my calendar, I had the the uh community meeting was at six o'clock. So did that change or what's that?
The council meeting?
No, the community rec uh rec meeting. I had it at six to eight.
But tomorrow is a community meeting.
Oh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow is the community.
Okay, so.
Uh, open house.
Oh, yeah, right, but I had that at.
For forty seven. Um, we don't have another rack meeting scheduled at this time.
Right, but that's what I had in my calendar is that it was six to eight. From the last.
No, it just came out four to seven on the well.
Okay, yeah, but after the last one, I put it in my phone that it was at six o'clock. So that's why I'm saying it must have changed.
Yes, the uh, I I I heard you saying, I'm sure King, um, there there, these meetings have. Moved quite a bit at the request of some of the rack members because it was getting um a little um heavy during the holidays, and so they wanted to stretch it out a little bit more and. And and not have it be um so many meetings in a row, so we we stretched it out, and so I think that's what you're seeing is there was a change. Um, but again, tomorrow it is a community meeting of four to seven. Um, here, uh, and it's just a drop in, there's not gonna be any presentation or anything, it's just drop in. Look at the maps, provide any comments you want, we can chat with Rowan and I, we'll help you with any questions in terms of the public, you guys already know the answers. Um, or you can go online, and like I said, there's not another rack meeting scheduled at the moment. Um, because we weren't quite sure, um. You know, after this new council committee board was gonna happen, so we didn't want to schedule anything until we have better, better direction.
Hey, anything else with the U G B relook? All right, we'll move on to item number eight is the land use applications and the. City project report. Any questions, comments? Um, I had uh one thing I wanted to bring up since uh. Uh, I know this is three J's and this was for the city council, but I just did. To bring up the question and to see if we know anything about. From our position here is that the uh Brent Hill uh traffic calming. Project is currently in one year maintenance period until October the twenty fifth, or excuse me, two thousand twenty five, and. And all the deficiencies, the deficient items. Noted at the end of our time or created, and how can it be in that when they haven't finished traffic calming?
Okay, what was that?
How can they do that when it had, they haven't finished the traffic calming?
I would have to round back with Brian on that, um, our contract engineer, to to your point, it is um. What he manages for the city.
Right.
Um, and so I I'm not sure, you know, I I'm. Not involved in that conversation.
Okay.
So let me um follow up with Brian, um, that was um traffic calming in phase one.
Yeah, because I mean, it's supposed to be Yorkshire and three hundred ninth, now I know they're holding off on three hundred ninth. Uh, I'm assuming for the Jesse Mays sidewalk project and the three hundred ninth and three hundred thirteenth. But how does the traffic calming get into a maintenance period when it's not completed?
Yeah, let me, let me uh get an answer for you on that.
You know, that or I'll ask him, but I just wanted to bring it up here because it's in our package.
Oh, absolutely, no, it's a, it's a valid question, and and I'm sorry I don't have an answer for you, but um, you know, I will certainly get one and and as I've done in the past, I will email that out to the um. The whole, the whole body here.
Right, thank you. Any other questions, comments on land use applications or the city project? Monthly report?
Not the locations, but have we seen, has there been any buzz with any new? Potential businesses coming to town?
Well, I'm sorry, was I?
I not, I wasn't specifically asking about any um applications, um, but has there been any buzz about any new businesses coming to town?
Uh. We have um.
Stupid boarded up Safeway on Glenville, it's just hideous now.
We have a.
Or Safeway subway, excuse me.
The the axe throwing place just opened up recently, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that and the world tide, the um.
Oh, the axe.
The axe throwing uh miniature golf place just opened up recently. Um, there is a coffee shop on the other end of that called uh Blackwater Coffee that is looking to open up pretty soon. Um. There's a gentleman that's been talking to me about doing some type of um pizza space, but uh more like a by the slice type of pizza joint. Um, he also may locate in that strip mall, um, but they're running out of parking over there, um, they're having some issues. So we need to work with uh Dave Van Hee over there on on what's going on, and he might have to get some type of um. Shared parking arrangement set up with Taco Bell to allow his customers to use the Taco Bell parking lot, um, so uh. Those I'm familiar with, um. We did hear that Great Master may want to do some type of expansion of their business here soon. Um, so excited to see what they come up with, uh, we've seen some initial layouts, but they are a little big. Um, because of the floodplain and the significant natural resource area uh kind of limits where they can go in that uh northeast corner of their property. Um, but uh certainly excited to see what they come up with, it would uh be a good, a good addition for that neck of the woods because it would improve that whole north south street that fronts their. Property line on the west side there, so that would be a nice improvement. Um, as far as the boarded up subway goes, um, nobody's come to the planning department yet. Uh, to uh get a tenant improvement permit to do anything inside that building. Um, there's been a lot of different things kicked around, a lot of rumors.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't want to go down the rumor mill, we've all seen how that works. We're seeing how the rumor mill works with the U G B, so uh, I don't want to.
Funny, Taco Place on the planet's been listed.
Right, 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 just funny, when I worked at the city of Ben, they wanted an Olive Garden so bad over in Ben. That whatever broke ground, everybody was like, is that the Olive Garden company? I mean, it was amazing how bad they wanted that thing over there. And so, uh, yeah, I don't want to create any rumors, I I'll wait until I know what's going on, and um, once we know, I'll I'll share it with you folks, so you guys know too, but um. Uh, something's gonna happen for sure. With that, believe.
Do you have any update on the status of the commercial street housing?
Which one?
Commercial street housing?
Uh, no, that that gentleman is um not very communicative, unfortunately, um, we have been trying to. Get a hold of him to talk about doing um alternative developments on that property than what he is looking at doing. Um, he won't call me back. Um.
If we uh spend a rezone, better, oh yeah.
Well, that's one of the things we wanted to talk to him about, um. You know, we also want to talk to the block of homes that are immediately to the west of uh the city hall block. Um, and rezoning some of those properties as well to commercial. Um, and so we would like to have the commercial.
Next to the red house. Right?
Yeah.
Those.
The, the. Said the city halls are.
No, no, on the, on the south side of commercial.
South side.
West of the city hall.
Oh, south side, what?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, so, okay.
And then all.
She's got the red house.
Yeah, yeah, and then rezoning some of those other properties that are on the north side of commercial. Uh, to commercial, to a commercial zone, right, so that property. Um, as well as the um Old Westy Piston property, the property that's right next to it, the church property that's on I P U, the city property that's on. Get all that.
It was, it was commercial before land I P U.
Yeah.
Because I P U should have been overlay and not a zone, but that's another story.
And I mean, those are the type of things too that will get addressed with the T G M grant if we were to um. Get it, um, you know, we we may do away with the I P U zone, or we may make it.
It's a no.
Or we may do something different, so those would be the type of things that we could address with that grant. Um, but yes, I I do believe, um, if um. If this city council puts a kibosh on the U G B, that looking at commercial street will be their number one focus.
What about North Avenue?
What about it?
The. Of Rowan.
Are you talking about that uh east end there that's not completed yet? Uh, Lenar is still working on getting that done, um, you know, as, I'm not sure if you've been in some of those meetings or not, Eddie, but um. One of the things that uh Brian Feeny shared with us, the delay had to do with the relocation of some of the private utilities that were in that roadway. And they kind of dragged their feet, um, I know Brian heard a lot from both um Mayor Lenahan and Captain Sheldon about. Moving them along, and I think he did finally start getting some traction there on getting them to move. Um, but uh I I don't foresee the pavement going down on that roadway until probably spring.
Until they start paving in front of the school.
Exactly.
Because that's what they're waiting for.
Yeah. That's correct.
Not because they're held up on anything.
Well, they. They had time during the, there and then early fall when the weather was nice to to get this work done, and it just unfortunately did not get done. Um, and so now to Chair King's point, it's it's going to have to wait again until the paving season comes back. To to wrap it all up.
Got you, thank you.
And then that there's, and then the, as far as the west end of North goes, if that improvement will go past. You know, to end the phase five, and that's where those improvements will stop.
Got you, thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else on the land use, uh, move to item number nine, which is the planning commission. Hey, if there's nothing else on the land use, move to item number nine, which is the planning commission comments. On to physically, welcome back Commissioner Danica.
Thank you.
We missed you.
Thanks. I missed you guys, actually.
Glad to, yeah, just got corrected. So are there any final comments? Anything that the commission wants to express to the city council?
Good luck.
Our city council representatives, right?
Yeah.
I have a shield.
We try to make it easy for you.
I would, I mean, I would just, I would suggest that yeah, any city councillor that would hopefully support the planning commission's decision on a, some type of urban growth expansion and also support the city on its appeal against the referendum. And so maybe somebody ought to talk to their neighbor maybe, but.
I'm never home.
Yeah. So anyway, appreciate any support we get from city council, even though that may be very tough. So item number ten is city council comment. Your turn.
Thank you, guys. A couple of things about this meeting. One thing as I said, I sent out an email to the people that made the agenda happen. That I suggested the next four to six meetings are work sessions for city council. Be able up to par of what, what's going on, be with you guys. Make it a meeting where they don't have to choose a show thing they have, right? It's going to be mandatory. So I said that on as we were chatting, that's probably a good idea. That Heather had. So we've all been around the sun a few times. We know how people behave when change happens. It's a pretty major change for the city. And you guys are working life. You guys have been doing this job for a while now. You guys are pretty familiar with names and places. But I have noticed is the city council people that when they go to run generally have either an axe to grind or they have a türkis, something they want to do. And it's pretty clear that this was the expansion. They go there with a bit of tense, right? I mean, they want to people often, when they people often try to say they're going to do that, they're like, hard business, we're going to do a hundred percent. But people are rarely ever that way, right? Once once they know people and know the process and stuff, there's some way to do it, right? Now, I do believe that through growth, the big eight hundred acres was too much. And I think every thought's too much and that's part of the situation. There is opportunity here. We already have the wheels and progress. We have momentum. I would really like the east side as we look at. And especially for our businesses, right? To try to get businesses in here. I think that's going to do everybody well. So I'm going to until I'm told otherwise, or until I see something different that changes my mind, I'm going to kind of lead that direction. But they're going to be new. They are clearly focused on getting something done, right? How that plays out, nobody knows yet. We're going to deliver the chance to talk to and you know, change, change peoples' ideas. But I want to try to make sure that we're not us against them, right? People that we hit before versus the new people, that's the us against them aspect. It's just, this changes their people. They have good intentions. Maybe, you know, things that us being understood, right? Maybe they are, who knows, right? But this, this is a bit shout. Let's give it, you know, it's new, scary. Change is always hard until it's not. So we're trying to do that part. Now, hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll see people and people run up. Or kind of know who they are. So things take with, with some, with some, with some great assault and understand that the change has happened and this one. I'm there.
Thank you. Item number eleven is staff comment.
Nothing, nothing beyond what we've discussed tonight.
Okay. If there is no other commission business, our next regular meeting is February the twelfth here at City Block. And with that, we are adjourned at seven fifteen.